There we go. Thank you. We will convene the May 22, 2022, City of Newport Beach Planning Commission. And as we always do, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Eric, if you'd like to lead us.
Great. Please rise. Please join me as we salute our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and move to the roll call.
All commissioners are present this evening with the exception of Commissioner Rosin, who is excused this evening.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move to the portion of our agenda where we have public comments. This is the time for public to come and speak to anything that is not currently on the agenda for this evening. If you'd like to come and speak to anything that's not on the agenda, now's your time. Looks like we don't have any, so we'll go ahead and move on to the, for requests for continuances on any items we have this evening.
None this evening.
All right. We'll go ahead and move over to consent items. And we just have one, which are the minutes of May 12, 2022.
I'm going to move to approve the minutes with Mr. Mosher's edits.
One second.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Moving right along, we'll go ahead and move forward, move on to public hearing items. And we'll start with item number two, which is the Newport Beach Tennis Club Development Agreement Extension, PA 2022-038. And we'll begin with that.
Yes, good evening, Chair Lowry, and my name is David Lee with the Planning Commission. Tonight I'll be presenting the Newport Beach Tennis Club Development Agreement Extension. So just to give you a quick background on the Newport Beach Tennis Club site, it's located at 1602 East Coast Highway on the corner of East Coast Highway and Newport Center Drive. As you can see, the red lines show the location of the property and currently has 24 tennis courts, as well as a tennis clubhouse. And it's adjacent to the Newport Beach Country Club Golf Course, which is not a part of this project. So the purpose of being here tonight is to extend a development agreement, which was approved in 2012, as part of the overall redevelopment project for the Newport Beach Tennis Club site. In 2012, the city council approved the project, which allowed the replacement of an existing tennis clubhouse, reduced the tennis courts from 24 courts to seven courts, allows 27 boutique hotel units, which are known as the bungalows, and also five single-family residences, which are known as the villas. Here's a site plan that shows the project as approved from 2012. As you can see, there's a tennis clubhouse, the seven tennis courts, the villas, which are the single-family residences, and these are the bungalows, which are the hotel units. So the applicant is requesting extension of the development agreement, which expires on September 23, 2022. Staff recommends a one-year extension, and the applicant has agreed with that time period as it is ample time to process the new project amendment, which is currently in process with the city. The amendment application will be presented to the Planning Commission for consideration at a future date. That sums up my presentation. I'm available for any questions as well. And the applicant representative is project manager Jonathan Bailey. He's available for any questions as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have a, okay? Hello. Whoa. What, do you have any idea what the changes are going to be?
Yes, the changes, the application's still in process, but the changes in general, there's going to be 14 more hotel units. There's going to be one more tennis court. And also, the five single-family residences, there's still going to be five residential units overall, but three of them will be condominium units instead of standalone single-family. So two single families and three condos.
And I see where they request a 10-year extension, and staff said one, and they agreed to that?
Yes.
All right. All right. Thank you. Any other further questions with staff at this point? Sarah?
Yeah, just real quick with the revisions that they're proposing to the site plan with this one-year extension, would those revisions then come back to us for approval?
Thank you, Commissioner Clausmar. They would come back to Planning Commission as a full project with all the different entitlements for your review.
And there would then be a longer extension with the development agreement, I would assume.
That's correct, yeah. The basis for the one-year extension was to go ahead and give them time to process the current entitlements, and then we would go ahead and tie in the new entitlements with this DA.
Great, thank you.
When we saw this applicant for the alcohol license, there was a lot of discussion around ownership, 50%, one guy, and 25 and 25 of another group. I was watching the planning, or the city council meeting too, and there was some discussion about this related to this site when you were talking about housing. How does that affect this project? And is there one person that has a greater say in this? It looked like there was Mr. O'Hill or something was involved with being the managing partner or something. So what's the city's take on that? You know, he's allowed to do this, or is there going to be a fight when this comes back to us? You know, what are we getting into, I guess, in the future here, too?
Sure. Rosalyn Ng is the project planner for this, so she kind of has the larger picture just in terms of the overall application. I mean, currently, they have a vested right under this DA with the parties that are there. The statute of limitations has run on any challenges to him as the owner or golf realty as the owner here for this. So for purpose of just this DA extension, I think the city is well within their right to do this. And then we would obviously look at the future entitlements going forward and the dynamics between the property owners as that project comes forward.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other further questions at this time? We'll go ahead, before we open the public comments, we'll start with Ex parte communication. We'll start down with Lauren.
None.
None.
None for me.
None.
None for me.
I had reached out to the applicant just to see what the, what was all the workings, inner workings behind all this stuff, and what potential amount of attendees we would have tonight, to see if we'd have a lot of tennis players here tonight. But that was very simple.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, comment section, and we'll start with the applicant. If you'd like, is there anything you'd like to say in response to the?
One thing I'll say is to clarify your question about Mr. O'Hill. I'm sorry, speak up. Oh, my name is Jonathan Bailey. I'm the project manager for the applicant Golf Realty Fund, and I represent Mr. O'Hill. So to answer your question about Mr. O'Hill is, he is the managing owner, so he has the authority to go ahead and process the entitlements. And there was an arbitration ruling by a judge from Holtz that confirmed that. And city attorney, and Yolanda Summerhill have that in writing. That's all.
Any other further questions for the applicant? All right, seen none, we'll go ahead and open it to, pause. Thank you.
Chair Lowry and members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I've not reviewed this carefully enough to know if it's at all relevant, but I think we heard the current entitlement is 24 tennis courts. And I don't know if that was also describing the current development, because the current development, as I think you heard, or at least it came out very loudly at the city council study session, the current development is actually something different. And if you look carefully at the aerial photo, you'll see at the north end of the property, close to where it says Granville and close to the homes, those tennis courts up there have been subdivided. So it's a smaller number of tennis courts and a large number of pickleball courts. So I don't know if anything needs to be revised regarding that, but the current development is somewhat different than the current entitlement. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't believe we have any further questions, so go ahead and close the public comment section. Now it's time for commissioners, any other questions that you may have for staff? Or, actually, before that, let me just ask the applicant, are you okay with the conditions that are in the resolution? Okay, great, thanks. Questions that the commissioners have for staff or like to discuss amongst yourselves? If there's any motion?
I don't have a question, but I'll make a motion to approve PA 2022-038 as written.
I will second that.
We missed a vote? Yes? The motion carries unanimously.
All right. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to item number three, Senate Bill 9 Implementation Code Amendment, PA 2021-277. Andy Pritchard, he'll be speaking to us tonight on this. All yours.
Good evening, Chair Lowry and Commissioners. Ben Zadiba with the Planning Division. With me on my left, I've got Jaime Mario, Principal Planner, who will be available for questions or input as well. So luckily, you've seen the brunt of this state law change at your April 12 study session. We provided a detailed PowerPoint presentation and went into the nuances of the complicated law at that time. But kind of stepping back to give you a brief overview, because I know there's a lot to track these days. The bill became effective January 1 of this year, and predominantly has two provisions. You're looking at SB 9 housing development, which allows two-unit development on one single-family lot. In addition, you've got an urban lot split provision, which allows subdivisions of one single-family lot into two lots. And both of those provisions are ministerial or by right, essentially. They need to be processed administratively without a public hearing. So stepping back again, we took this to city council initially at a study session on November 30 last year, once we knew that the bill was coming. And we got direction to prepare a compliant yet restrictive ordinance, and that is what staff has drafted. We presented an initial iteration to you on April 12 and have since taken some of the feedback and comments received from both public and commissioners and made some refinements. And that is what you see attached to the staff report this evening for consideration to recommend to council for adoption. Again, just making sure we understand what the law does. You've got SB 9 housing development, which in a nutshell, this is what you hear about a single-family zoning is going away, and now we're going to allow fourplexes on a single lot. And this is what you'll get. So by law, we have to allow the addition of at least an 800-square-foot SB 9 unit. So when you look at this lot, you've got the existing house, they could add an additional 800-square-foot SB 9 unit. And then in conjunction with state law, they can add two ADU units for a total of four on a single lot. So without an ordinance in place, again, SB 9 has two provisions, the SB 9 housing development and the urban lot split, they interplay with each other. And what you can end up with, under our current ordinance, without an ordinance in place, rather, is four units across the two lots, plus four more ADUs for a total of eight units on two lots. And that's because our ADU ordinance has specific language in it that would allow this, even though state law's intention is really only four total across the two lots. So with an ordinance, which again is coming before you this evening for consideration, we can cap that at four units by putting that explicitly in the ordinance, and that's what we've done. So two units on each lot. So here you've got the lot split, we've removed the existing house, we've put in three new SB 9 housing units, and we've added one additional accessory dwelling unit for a total of four units, again, two on each lot for a total of four on what was once a single-family lot. So as part of the ordinance, we encaptured all of the state mandatory requirements, but state law also allows us to apply city-specific objective design standards that do not conflict with those requirements. And as such, the ordinance for consideration has several provisions related to size of the units, and also point out the affordable housing requirement, which applies to one of the new SB 9 units. We've also got objective design standards, which talk to height and other limitations. And lastly, I'd note that we prohibit condominiums, meaning they cannot further subdivide the airspace and sell the units separately. They have to remain ownership and rental units. And per state law, the owner does have to occupy one of those units. Again, there's another provision for urban lot splits, which would allow separation of lot or subdivision of lot space into two different lots. And as part of that, we are proposing portions of Title 19 to change and Title 20, again, to regulate the development and design of those new lots and the units that will be in place on those lots. A couple of things to note, again, limit the maximum of two units per lot for a total of four. That's how we thwart that potential for eight units. Now, requiring access through shared driveway or alley access is important to note, because that's really saving our on-street parking. So if you look at the diagram, you've got the nice cars parked there. We don't want them proposing a curb cut to take away that on-street parking. We want to require them to take access from the alley, therefore saving that on-street parking, and even further prohibit removing on-street parking, period. Again, these are provisions that we can apply in harmony with state law to provide city-specific regulations. Some additional requirements to note, we did put in an automatic sunset clause, which would react if state law changes to stop SB 9 units from being allowed to be created if that, again, goes away. It's currently inapplicable in the coastal zone, and that is until the city's local coastal program, which is certified by the Coastal Commission, is amended. Staff is going to need to analyze impacts or potential impacts to coastal resources in order to proceed with that amendment, and that'll come at a future date. We will also be requiring deed restrictions to notify future owners of these units of the requirements and limitations. One thing that we didn't mention, state law does talk about short-term rentals, and these cannot be used for short-term rental purposes. As far as next steps, assuming you recommend adoption this evening, we plan to take this before the city council to a public hearing, and adoption July 12 with a second reading on July 26 if it is adopted. Beyond that, staff is available for questions. As I said, Jaime is here, and I'm available as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions for staff?
With the new units that could potentially be built here, are there parking requirements that need to be followed?
So state law allows only one parking requirement, or one parking space, rather, in most cases. There are some exceptions, and it'll talk, it talks to what they call high-quality transit areas. We do have a map of that if you wish to see it, but it primarily follows the bus lines, which in consultation with OCTA, we understand are maybe not accurate. So we're working on getting that updated. I do have the map, sorry. That's probably going to be helpful. There you go. So the blue buffer areas are buffers to the major transit stops. And as I understand it, those are buses that have 15-minute headways. And once they get down towards the peninsula, as we understand it, they don't maintain that headway any longer. So therefore, that's really not an accurate depiction. But in those areas, they'd be exempt from parking requirements.
Okay, so in any of the non-shaded areas, they would need to provide one parking stall per unit?
Correct.
Could you go back to slide seven? So is the idea, when you split the lot, that the red hashed area would be used for parking, then?
No, apologies for the confusion on the diagram. It's intended to show what should be an access easement or an access way, depending on how they configure the lot. So if it's a flag, we would want an easement over that flag to prohibit them from developing it. It's a perpetual access easement to the rear portion of the lot or the front portion in this case.
So, sorry, I guess in this example, let's say in the 1,200-square-foot area, there's a home, and they're going to build homes in the 1,800-square-foot area. If you're not allowing curb cuts, how do they provide the parking?
Well, for the 1,200-square-foot, it's abutting the alleys, so presumably there's a garage there. With the access off the flag, there should be one parking space provided for each unit on that new space.
I see. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Peter? Page three, refer to HOAs and CCNRs. My understanding is that an HOA cannot deny a request to split and build two to four to eight.
As we understand law today, HOAs can enforce their private CCNRs to restrict SB 9 development across the board.
Was that a change?
But not ADUs.
But not what?
But not accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units, the state law for accessory dwelling units has evolved over time to take that into account. That is something that could happen in the future with SB 9, but as currently written, private CCNRs do hold up against SB 9 development.
All right, another question on page four. It spoke of no requirements for off-site improvements. Now, let's say there was a curb, six feet back the property line, and that six-foot strip is the government strip, call it. What if it needed a sidewalk?
That is not something that can be imposed through an SB 9 project.
Oh, okay. Page four also referred to the word "may" require easements for the provision of public services. That's kind of a loosely written term. Is that negotiable, or is that not, does it mean we're not sure?
Yeah, that's utility easement, so sewer, water provisions, and electricity.
All right. You're batting three for three. Page five, it referred to design standards at the top of the page. So the city can, quote, can create and apply tailored objective design standards to better guide the regulations. So that means, could that go all the way to say architectural standards to meet what's happening on the block or the neighborhood?
If you stated it that way, as you stated, Commissioner Kettin, that would be too subjective. There has to be very clear, objective guidelines to follow for these types of standards.
All right. Four for four. And I thought I read in here that if, when you do this, owner had to occupy and live in a unit for three years.
That's correct.
All right. On page six, I don't see that. It says near the top, owner occupancy requirement, one of the two units, dwelling units occupied by the owner of the parcel. It didn't refer to three years. I know I read it in here, though, somewhere, maybe in the back.
That requirement's in the ordinance language itself, the staff report being summary.
No more? Thank you. All right. Eric, what do you think? Lauren?
A couple of questions. Can you talk a little bit more about Coastal Commission? I know you mentioned in the staff report that this requires an LCP amendment, which makes perfect sense. So how many of the quote-unquote "affected" lots or lots where this is applicable are in that coastal zone? And then how many remaining? In other words, how long is the process going to take, in your estimation, to get through an LCP amendment? And in the meantime, how many lots do we expect to potentially be able to process this kind of development?
Great question, Commissioner Kleiman, or Vice Chair Kleiman, rather. So I don't have an exact number as far as how many parcels are affected that are in the coastal zone, but I do know that approximately 17,500 lots could take advantage of SB 9 development provisions. I don't know the percentage that's in the coastal zone, but assuming that obviously a good chunk of the city is in the coastal zone boundary, everything south of Coast Highway and most of the peninsula into the west, I would expect that there are quite a few lots that cannot currently take advantage of SB 9.
If I can just add as well, there was a paper done by the Turner Institute, I believe through UC Berkeley. Obviously, it's not a one-size-fits-all, but the, kind of their estimation based on a study they did based on lot size and so forth, came up with kind of a 10% give or take, just, you know, in different cities throughout the state of California. They didn't take Newport Beach, but that gives you kind of a rough estimate of what we think you could have, give or take.
That's helpful, thank you. And then, this has already taken effect?
That's correct, January 1.
And have we had any applications to date?
No, we've had several inquiries at the planning counter, but we have not had any applications submitted.
Can you talk a little bit more about the owner occupied requirement that Commissioner Kettin have kind of already questioned? And then also the urban land trust option that was mentioned in the staff report?
Sure. So as far as the owner occupancy is concerned, state law simply requires signing an affidavit, and there's really nothing beyond that. And there's some indication that you cannot do anything beyond having them sign owner affidavits. So you're kind of taking the developer owners' word for the fact that they're going to live there for three-year period. So it is something that is captured in our ordinance and consistent with what state law requires. So again, owner occupancy required for one of the units for a three-year period for both types of projects.
Okay. And then last question, the affordability restriction, the 30-year restriction that's proposed, and that's just for one of the units? Was there thought to why one and not more than one?
Yes, actually, and that's another good question, Vice Chair Kleiman. So with the affordability requirement, it's, in a sense, considered an inclusionary requirement, if you will, on the project. And by requiring one of the new units to be affordable, we are keeping the inclusionary percentage lower than if we were to, say, require all of the units, which would be 100% inclusionary, if you think of it that way. And then that may be seen as an impediment to SB 9 development, which is not what we're trying to do here. Some of the thought, too, was that obviously the development costs and the cost of land in the city of Newport Beach is extremely high. And so how do we really get into the already developed neighborhoods with affordable units? And this was a way to put affordable units on the ground that could help offset some of our arena allocation, which, as we know, is heavy-handed towards affordable units.
Yeah, that was why I was asking the question. So thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Kettin, did you have a, no question? Okay. No questions? Okay. Well, if there's no further questions, we'll go to ex parte communications. We'll start with Eric.
None.
None?
None.
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 Now we will go ahead and, oh. A quick one before we get out of this. I assume, once this started, did you guys vet with home builders or real estate companies around town, if they'd looked at this study session with you guys and commented, or it's just the bitter pill?
We had a little input here and there. We haven't had formal outreach, per se, but, you know, we did have, again, the study session back in November before council and the study session before you all in April. So we've gotten the word out in that way, and we haven't received any comments about this being strict.
And Commissioner Kettin, so when items like this were, which are directed by the city council, we just kind of focus on council direction. And we did the study session here. This evening here was publicly noticed, and we don't have anybody else kind of commenting on it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing here. And if I can...
And like to come up?
Chair Lowry and members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I may be a little dense. I didn't quite follow the dialogue between Vice Chair Kleiman and the staff about the coastal zone and the applicability of SB 9 and how that's impacted by the delayed approval of amendments to the local coastal program. Are we understanding that, which is it, until that LCP is finally processed, is it a free-for-all? And people can do anything under SB 9? Or is there something staying, preventing the application of SB 9 currently in the coastal zone? And when we have this conflicting zoning and coastal plan, which way is it? And then the other comment I was going to make is I appreciate Vice Chair Kleiman having taken the time to read this. I have not quite done that yet. I saw that there's a daunting amount of code from Sacramento in a small font here, many pages of that, many pages of revision. And it comes no surprise to you that in my opinion, poorly-written, confusing laws that can lead to litigation come from many places, including Sacramento. And I just looked at one provision here as perhaps typical of this, I don't know if it is or not, but on handwritten page 47, towards the bottom of the page, are the conditions under which the city cannot impose parking requirements. And the last of those, I think in your copy this is in red, meaning it's just copied from the state code. We cannot impose parking conditions on a property within one block of a car-share vehicle. And then I think it's in blue in your copy, we've added a clarification of what car-share vehicle means. But does anybody know what "within one block" means? I looked in Title 20 and Title 21, the definition of a block. You will not find it very informative. It's an area of land surrounded by streets, not necessarily the smallest one. I don't know if they mean here a unit of measure, like you had a city that's laid out in a grid and a block is a certain length. Most of us kind of know what a block is, but if you look at the map of Newport Beach, there will be streets and the houses on one side are divided by roads. On the other side, it's continuous houses, no roads. So block is real long on one side of the street, short on the other. Which side of the street is applied to? What if the car-share vehicle, even if it was on a grid, if the car-share is on the opposite side of the street from where the lot is? Is that within a block? What does this mean? I would be a loss, and I think people on one side or the other, I don't know how that can be applied without any discretion. Thank you. And yet it's supposed to be objective. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, looks like we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. Maybe I'll, now's the time for questions for staff, and maybe I'll follow up in terms of what Mr. Mosher alluded to in terms of the LCP and the applicability of this. And that was a...
Yeah, I'll take that, Chair Lowry. So for the SB 9 units in the coastal zone, our LCP does not allow that. So we're not going to allow any of the SB 9 units in the coastal zone until we can conduct an LCP amendment, and that will take us some time. So this ordinance that you're recommending to the city council is just going to be applicable outside the coastal zone, and we're not going to allow it in the coastal zone until we do the LCP amendment.
Thanks. Any other questions for staff before we bring it up here? None? Anybody would like to have any questions amongst our discussion amongst ourselves or any motion or comments?
I don't have any questions, but I'll make a motion to support this to go to city council as drafted. So this is PA 2021-277.
I know, it's almost more of a formality than it is, than it really is a discussion, unfortunately.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We'll move to staff and commissioner items, and we'll go to item number four, motion for reconsideration. There's none. We'll go ahead and go to item number five, report by the community development director or requests for matters which a planning commissioner member would like placed on a future agenda.
Thank you, Chair Lowry. I'll go ahead and tackle that. So thank you to all the commissioners for adjusting your schedule. Tonight's actually a special planning commission hearing. We had to move some of the calendar dates around. It was kind of a perfect storm in May, so we will be back on our regular schedule next month in June. So we do have a planning commission hearing June 9th, and we will cancel our second meeting in June. So for Commissioner Kettin, it'll be his last commission meeting on June 9th, and I hope all of you can attend because we'll do a little celebration for Commissioner Kettin for all his years of service on the planning commission.
I may come to the second meeting if nobody will be here though.
So for the June 9th commission meeting, we do have four items. One is an encroachment permit variance on 201 Crystal. We do have a CDP application for the residential units on the 22nd Street on the peninsula, and we will have a study session on the ADU ordinance that our subcommittee has been working on, which is Chair Lowry, Vice Chair Kleiman and Commissioner Wagan. And that's it.
Thank you.
Excuse absences for me, I know I'm going way out here, but November 18th.
You've got that one covered.
I actually have a number of conflicts coming up, so I'm not able to make the 9th, June 9th. The two meetings in July right now, I'm currently not able to make. I'm wondering if there's any way that I could zoom into the one on the 21st, or do I need to be here in person?
I know the laws have changed a little bit, so I'm going to punt that to Yolanda.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and coordinate after this and just kind of move forward with that?
Okay.
Thank you. Any others? Looks like there's none, so we'll go ahead and move on to the adjournment. We'll adjourn at 7:08. All right. Thank you, everyone.